Good afternoon and welcome to the council committee, the whole meeting in December tenth, twenty twenty five. I'd like to call this meeting to order and take an opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges a Beaver Cree Dene and Beaver uh and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work and play on Treaty Eight territory within uh within Turtle Island and acknowledge that these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Moving on to the third item on today's agenda, I'd um like to get a motion to go in camera. Councilor O'Connor?
I move that we go on camera.
Please vote. Thank you for that.
O'Connor in favor?
Deason in favor.
That carries unanimously and we will be coming out of camera shortly. Thank you for your participation.
Welcome back to the council committee of the whole December 10, 2025. Thank you for your patience as we had a few items of in camera nature for discussion. We're now on to item number four on today's council committee, the whole agenda. First one under four under reports being advocacy update. And I will turn that over to Ms. Pinnock or Chief Bailey for introduction.
Thank you so much, Mayor Clayton. So in summary today, we continue consistent engagement on all priority advocacy files. That's strengthening provincial relationships, advancing funding discussions, especially being mindful of the 2026 budget. Consultation is currently in progress from the government of Alberta, so we're proactive in our engagement there. And of course, positioning the city as a solutions focused partner on electricity distribution, healthcare, policing, recreation, transportation, among many others. Just noting a couple of key highlights on policing. We have had recent positive meeting with Minister Ellis. And that's providing an update not only on the police transition, but robust discussion about overall ongoing community safety priorities. And on transportation, the province held a Highway 40X connector open house here in Grand Prairie on Friday, December 5th with Minister Duchin in attendance. And so we'll continue working with MLAs and regional partners to ensure the project is understood as a key northern priority and position for capital plan funding. Thank you.
Thanks for that update. Any questions on the items that are in front of you? If not, advocacy items are regularly updated council committee, the whole they're also visited. They're also visited annually, so they're, and they're a bit of a moving target. So if there are any items on your radar, feel free to bring them up now. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, so essentially, just looking for administration's advice here on the last, last point on our advocacy list with the federal government in regards to the pipeline MOU that was signed recently over this past week. There's been lots of noise coming out of Ottawa and the House of Commons and the Liberals voting against a motion to support the pipeline, I guess in the House, but they still say they support the project overall. Is this just smoke and mirrors, Mr. Burke, or is there, is there pause to be concerned?
Mr. Burke.
As this is the last week of Parliament sitting before the Christmas break, I would say I would take motions with a grain of salt. And it appears that the government and the province have an agreement in place, and that will proceed, that would be the signal I would take.
All right. Seeing no one else, thanks for that update. I'm going to go to item 4.2, which is a grants update, and I will turn that one over to Ms. Pinnick.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. It has been a busy fall in our grants portfolio, with a number of applications being due and being submitted. I won't go through all of the ones that you have in your package, but just a couple of highlights. We have applied for the Alberta Community Partnership, requesting funds for retaining professional services to develop a regional volunteer management plan for G-Prep. We also have a significant application into the Government of Alberta through the drought and flood protection program, and we hope to hear about that one in the new year. We also have our application in for Canada Summer Jobs, which is getting submitted this week. So just a couple of highlights. We do have some agreements that are in the works, and we do hope to have some announcements for council in the new year. And we do plan in Q1 of the new year to bring back the full grants report. So everything that's been submitted over 2025, everything we were successful for, things that we weren't successful for, and just a couple of highlights. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Open that up to Council, recognizing Counselor Bressey.
Great, thank you. Just a question about potential upcoming federal grants. I know with federal budget being announced, there's some building community funds that might be some pretty aggressive programs with pretty aggressive timelines. Are we tracking those and ready to apply for whatever we might be eligible for when they get rolled out in early January?
Ms. Pinnick.
Through the Chair, yes. Our grants coordinator that's currently seconded is working with a new schedule and calendar for what's upcoming in 2026 that we know about, and is actively working with other grants coordinators across the province to identify anything new that's coming forward.
Excellent, thank you.
Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. A couple of questions. I'm just wondering on the Fire Smart Vegetation, it just has, it says Crystal Lake and O'Brien ineligible due to environment reserve status. Can I, I just, can I get a little bit bigger extending what that, what that means?
Chief Glavin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Clayton. That was directly from FRIA. They will not fund it based on risk. They don't believe there's enough risk, so we'll have to either fund another grant or do it internally.
Okay, and I'm just curious, why do they put in our environment reserve status as that thing, is that?
Chief Glavin.
I'd have to get some more information. Environmental reserve, you're not supposed to touch it unless it poses a risk? And I believe FRIA is taking the position that there is no significant risk, and therefore they're not willing to fund it.
Okay, thanks for that. And my other question more on a bigger picture, does our, does our city track what other municipalities would receive for different levels of grants? Like, just always curious, are we hitting above our weight class, below our weight class, or how we're doing with, as far as getting grants to the city of Grand Prairie?
Ms. Pinnick.
Through the Chair, we don't formally track what everybody else is getting anecdotally through our network of other grants coordinators across the province. We are keeping tabs on who is getting what, especially for ones that we are applying for. But if that is something that council would like us to look at for specific grants, we certainly could do that.
No, I wouldn't, I guess it's will of council, but I guess, I'm just curious where we stack up. I mean, if we're, you know, it's a little bit different to talk to ministers and different advocate groups, if we're constantly getting grants, but if we're never getting our share and we're seeing other municipalities getting a bunch of grants, that would be more of a concern for me. And without knowing what other municipalities are getting, I don't know what I would have to be able to say on that conversation, so.
And it's, you know, there's so many grants that are loosely associated with advocacy work that we do with ministers, I mean.
Yeah, I guess Counselor Berg just made a comment, there's grants as a budget line probably in most of our books, but that doesn't necessarily tell you what specific grant we're getting.
No, and more to your question of, there are grants that are open for everybody to apply for, that's minimally tied to advocacy. Advocacy, for example, is police funding grants, transition grant, that's a significant piece of advocacy that we did for that grant. So grants that are open for application to all municipalities, that I think is something that's fair to say, you know, how well we're doing or not. Yeah. Ms. Pinnick, anything to add on that?
Through the Chair, we can do a little bit of digging on a couple of these grants, and when we bring back the overall 2025 report, we can see what we can highlight, just comparing some of those grants to what others may have received.
Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you. Just a comment, maybe something that could help Counselor Platt answer that question, and a question for administration. So I'm pretty sure that environmental reserve in the Fire Smart Vegetation Management has a lot to do with the riparian setback that we instilled on Crystal Lake and other wetland water bodies, like, such as O'Brien and stuff. Plus, since they're so close to a water body, I question whether there's a lot of fire work, smart work that needs to get done on there. So my question for administration is, is, this probably goes to Chief Glavin. The Bear Creek Corridor, I totally understand, but Crystal Lake and O'Brien, why did administration peg those for Fire Smart Vegetation Management?
Chief Glavin.
Thank you, Chair Clayton. There has been some fire activity over there in the area to the south of the lake, along 116th Avenue. We've seen some or had some community feedback of that area with some concerns, and we're looking for ways to address those in a timely fashion.
And same for O'Brien, or?
Yep, similar.
Counselor Platt. Anyone else on grants? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to item 4.3, the 2025 municipal election. There is a staff report and a document with challenges and opportunities in your eScribe. I will turn this one over to Chief Bailey for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The 2025 municipal and school board elections were successfully delivered under significant new provincial legislative requirements, including the implementation of a permanent elector register and mandatory transition to hand-counting ballots. This report that Kim Pinnick will outline, Ms. Pinnick, provides committee with an overview, or council with an overview of election planning, execution outcomes. I will note the stable voter turnout. This strengthens administrative processes and the operational learnings to inform future electoral cycles. We won't go into all the details of this report. Ms. Pinnick will just take you through some key highlights, and I do want to commend her leadership of the election process overall. It was exemplary.
Thanks for that introduction, Ms. Pinnick.
Thank you, through the Chair. As Chief Bailey noted, this election was a little bit different, based on some changes to the MGA and the LAEA. Candidates saw some changes to their campaign periods and financing. Voters had some new ID requirements. The municipality had to create to maintain a permanent elector register. And there was the province prohibiting the use of electronic tabulators, so the ballots had to be hand-counted. And so all of these did impact our planning and logistics around budget, or around the election, and also the budget. So to manage and prepare for these changes, we did have to hire over 350 election workers to support the process, the advanced vote days, election day, and the count. We did expand our advanced vote dates from four to six in 2025, just to provide some more opportunities for electors to get out and vote. We also increased the number of sites that we used on the election day. That was based on some feedback from previous elections, and also to manage the total volume at each of those stations, and to support the evening count. So overall, we had a total voter turnout of 21.5%. That's slightly lower than in 2021, where we were at 21.8% voter turnout, with just over 9,500 voters voting. I will note that a lot of municipalities did see some lower voter turnout in this past municipal election. With previous elections, we did share our results back with Municipal Affairs, and we have added all those results to our open data portal on the city's website, along with previous election data. In terms of budget, we do anticipate that the budget will be, will come in just around $300,000. Current estimates have us at $296,000, and we're still reconciling some actuals there with our estimates, and final invoices are coming in as we wrap things up, and hope to have that all reconciled by the end of the year. Many municipalities projected that they would be double the costs for this election based on 2021, and we're fairly close to that. We have identified some high-level challenges and opportunities that our team will be considering for future elections, and also as we engage with other municipalities to understand how their elections went, and to employ some best practices that can improve our processes in the future. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks for that, Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So while we do a review, I'm just kind of curious if the province does a review of the process around costs, but also I heard a number of complaints at registration of people having to take extra time as opposed to having the traditional voter list and cross their name off. So are you aware if the province reviews this, or are they completely satisfied and just letting, going to let this ride going forward?
Ms. Pinnick.
Through the Chair, we do know that Alberta municipalities is collecting some data from municipalities and putting together some type of a report. We haven't had anything specific from Municipal Affairs regarding the election.
Excellent, thanks.
Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, very good report, by the way, Ms. Pinnick. The only concern I would have is under the first page on the fourth column, top one, candidate signage. Additional new requirements require amendments to bylaw, C1078. I was just curious as to when we could sit down and share what our experience was as councillors and people not following the rules. Is there a time that we could do a, just a session at Council Committee of the Whole and talk and make some recommendations as going forward?
Sorry, I guess my question to you would be, do you not find now appropriate?
Well, if you wanted, I'm not sure what the...
Unless I'm misunderstanding, that was my understanding, the intent of today's discussion.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind, but I...
The mic is yours.
Thank you. Just curious, for me, every one of us that ran knew where to put our signs, and we looked at the maps, and we went out and tried to ensure where our signs went. But there were some individuals that chose to put their signs willy-nilly, wherever. And I'm just wondering, poor bylaw had to work their Potinsky off trying to figure out the map, because the map, I think, in my view, you should be able to highlight the large map, and it should bring up a smaller version of that map that focuses on that area. Because red on green, if you're colorblind, I'm sorry, you'd have a tough time looking at that. And it looked like, and the other part of the map was included in the end of the bylaw, which it shouldn't be there, it should be right on the map. Here's where you need to go, here's what the area is. I think that would have made the job per bylaw a lot easier, and for the other candidates a lot easier. Is anybody else have any opinions on that? Because I know I'm not the only.
So your advice would be that GIS invest or explore opportunities for a more thorough map program?
To me, it should be direct right there. It shouldn't be, have to go to a second place, and you should know exactly where to put it.
So good feedback. Anything else before I go to the next person?
I'll let somebody else go, and then I'll get back in.
Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I share some of Counselor Connor's frustrations on that. Didn't have as much issues, I guess, with the maps. I guess just thinking back to the process when I come in to sign off at City Hall, and I'm not sure if we want to bring this back for amendment changes or how you want to do this, Mayor Clayton, but one thing that I would love to see happen is when you come into City Hall to sign off, that you sign a form that says you understand where your signs are supposed to go, and that's that. I don't understand why we've let some folks be bad actors, term after term after term, putting their signs where they don't belong. So that would be one of my suggestions, is that I think that's incumbent on our legislative services to educate those folks on, here's the maps, here's where your signs go. If they're in the wrong location, you'll get one warning, the second warning, you're going to be fined. If you put your signs illegal locations of any other business, you get a fine. So I don't know why, to me, we're allowing folks that are going to come in and try to sit around this horseshoe and make decisions on behalf of their community, break rules before they even start. So I would like to see a lot stronger language around that, for one. The second one I feel for administration on, because I know I was part of this process, we don't really, unless I'm understanding, maybe admin can see something different, if you choose to put a sign on a business or a private property, we don't really have a declaration form for that. So I know for me personally, I had bylaw phone me several times saying, hey, you're on all these business locations. I had to say have authorization, I just gave them names of the owners. Whether that was true or not, nobody really followed up. And so I appreciate that the business owner probably would have pulled my sign if they didn't really want it there. But I do wonder if we need to be a little bit more prescriptive on that and letting and educating people that are looking at it running right from the start. Here's your private property locations, or public locations, if you choose to go on private property, here's the form that you need to sign, and have that signed off by that individual, and you register that sign on another location. Appreciate this is extra work for administration, and I know that's not fun. But if we're not going to take the extra work, we're never going to stop this problem. If we're not going to ticket people that are going to put signs in the wrong spots, if we're not going to educate them on them, it's not stopping. And so I haven't seen a change in three terms personally, that this has been a problem every single term. I think it's incumbent on us as a city to just do more. So I guess my question, Mayor Clayton, is do we want to make amendments to this, or do we want to have this come back to? Because I would like to see some amendments that way with the policy. I think we could be wordsmithing for a long time on this today, so I'm just curious of what administration...
Sure, I'll turn it over to the city manager in a minute, but I think that what's appropriate is feedback, and then the direction would be to bring back a report to the appropriate standing committee for consideration. This won't be something that administration will put together overnight. There are some limitations in regards to what the municipality actually can and can't do. And so I think it's not that administration didn't do what they intended to do, and there's budget implications of every additional parameter that you put in regards to an election. So let's have a conversation around feedback, and then at the end, I suggest there be a motion about directing administration to bring back a report for discussion to the appropriate standing committee, which in my opinion would be the next, when, you know, a CCW, when, once it's complete.
Okay, so I guess for my two feedbacks, one would be, what happens if somebody chooses to sign, put a sign on public property? Is there a form that they should fill out so that the administration doesn't have to run around chasing that?
Bring back in a suggestion in regards to how that could be handled.
And two, part of the orientation when you bring your thing is should be, you understand where signs are, and you sign off that you put your sign in the wrong location, it will be pulled, and you will be fined. And I don't think there's, I appreciate the city shouldn't have to pay for this, but if somebody's breaking rules, somebody should be paying for it, and it shouldn't be the city.
Counselor Rogé.
Thank you, Mayor. I found the binder and the maps a bit confusing. My wife and I drove around, and we had to flip the maps over a few times to get the right direction and all that. Not a big deal, because after we did all that, we decided to put the map, my posters up beside Jackie Clayton's. That was the answer to our problem.
I remind you that many times, signs are put up by volunteers, not by the candidate, and sometimes...
Yeah, but if you go down, I'm going down with you. Thank you.
Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I really like Counselor Platt's idea of having everybody sign in at a station's form that says, hey, I will follow the signed bylaw, because then that puts the onus on them to learn it. But the onus is also on us as an organization as well, to provide as simplified means as possible for any new and incoming councillor to be able to read and navigate through the map system. Like, we're talking about 45 maps, and if you didn't download them and print them off, and have like your stacks of papers, right, then you're constantly going to the website, which the website couldn't... right, then you're constantly going to the website, which the website couldn't handle the traffic, which once you got, started scrolling past map 30, it would glitch and send you right back to page one as it reloaded the page. So that was frustrating in a sense and I wasn't the only one that experienced it because I talked to several candidates and they said, well, I just started putting in like Counselor Ogier, where all you guys put them. Because I couldn't get past like map 32 without it glitching on my phone and I didn't want to print off 60 pages. So for me, I think there is work that we could do with GIS and maybe we only need one map, like one map with a hyperlink on it. And then all those numbered area locations, GIS, you could just punch that in and then it brings up a full page map from somewhere else in the program. I think that might be a lot easier to develop and set out in that regards. Mind you, at the same time, I'm also a fan of the simplified method. Having these, having these sign zones, to me, created a lot of clutter in a lot of areas and people had to think creative, like Counselor Berg, you know, got creative on 68th Avenue and saw that, hey, there's this little gap up here right along the walking trails that no one's noticing, I'm going to put my sign there. But once his sign was there, you really couldn't put another sign in or around it. So it's like first come, first served and maybe that's the whole point of it. But my first few elections, it was, the rules were pretty simplified. It was not within 200 meters of a construction zone, not within 50 meters of a school zone, you know, 30 meters of an intersection and within a meter of the curb. That was pretty easy stuff. And then based on how you wanted to get noticed in the community is how you put your signs out and you were still responsible for cleaning them up at the end of it. But by creating all these sign zones, I don't know, sometimes, I guess my biggest, my biggest thing was, was that there was a couple of maps that included two maps on it. So I'm talking about 84th and 68th in particular, where pretty much you had the whole length of 84th and 68th that had two maps side by side, which they could have been individual maps themselves and given people a chance to space out signs more. And yet, they were only given two signs on those really long stretches of road that they could utilize going north or east or west on those two roads. So I would, if I were to simplify it, I would give more map locations. Like, I would look at the two or three maps on the map list that they have, those side by side, double maps that are two in one. Because if I was somebody that wanted to cheat on it, I'd be like, well, I'll use two for this and two for that. And then I'll argue with the city that they put two maps on this one map. And, you know, I think I could put four signs in that same distance of streets too and get better coverage for my sign. So GIS links, I think, would be easy. Maybe even simplify and go back to the old way. I don't know how much support I'd get for that. And the biggest thing is, is hard on bylaw too. So that GIS hyperlink would be easy on bylaw as well because when I talked with bylaw, I had the same thing. My Champions Gym sign got called on me twice, just complaints. Bylaw followed up. I had to tell two different bylaw officers, well, no, I got a deal with Raff. He says, yeah, put your sign there. And so they're just responding to complaints by the community essentially, or what they can notice. So if they had that ease of access, just like the candidates, I think it'd be easier to enforce and it'd be easier to place.
Thanks for your feedback. I'm going to, a couple of things. I just will remind my colleagues that the maps have significantly improved over time. When I was first elected, there was no maps and it was a free for all. And so signs have come a long way and previous councils decided to try to get management around it. And so I think the feedback today to make it even better is in the right direction. I am going to go to Counselor Bressi next, so he's not forgotten. And I'm going to ask Counselor Thiessen to take over as I need to step out for a Mises City Mayor's meeting. Go ahead, Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. Yeah, a couple of thoughts. Number one, I can't, from the province, going to do a full review of the Local Authorities' Election Act, at least is what Minister Williams has said. So there's feedback that you want to get fed into that. I'm very open to hearing that. Number two, talked about signs. I think that it is, my personal opinion, is way easier than the first time I ran. And I appreciate the map, although I appreciate too that everybody's brain looks different. So just as easy for me, doesn't mean as easy for everybody. But I personally think they're a lot better than they historically were. I also think that admin did a lot better job enforcing signs this election than they did the previous election. Still, I think we can do a little bit more work on that. But I also want to be careful because, as was mentioned, obvi, often you have volunteers that are doing it and they're well intentioned, but they mess up a little bit. Or even more concerning to me, sometimes you have people's signs being messed with and you have somebody move a sign and it ends up somewhere it shouldn't be and nobody in your campaign team had control over that. So I want to make sure that we're taking an education forward approach, not enforcement forward approach. But that being said, candidates that continuously and really blatantly are breaking the bylaw, absolutely I'm fine with them, with them getting a fine. But one thing that might be missing in this conversation is maybe we just have to do a better job making it easier for the general population to understand the sign rules. I think that the best accountability is if voters are holding accountable. And it was really hard for members of the public to tell if candidates were breaking the rules or not. So if we made a poster too, or made that easier for the general public to understand, maybe that would help. But the big topic I want to raise about elections is, I hope that when the report comes back to council and we talk about potential changes to elections, that we could get some information from administration about what requiring criminal record checks might look like. That's something that we were allowed to do as of last election. We didn't choose to and most municipalities didn't choose to require criminal record checks. That ability came kind of late in the game. But I do think that that's something that I want to consider us in tuning for the next election so that members of the public can, I think they have a right to know that, maybe. There's some downsides too, but I'd like to have that discussion about, do we want to require criminal record checks? So I hope that at the next report we get on this, that there could be a bit of discussion on what that might look like if council wanted to, wanted to add that in.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bressi. I have Counselor O'Connor next in the queue.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Thiessen, deputy, deputy.
I'm acting deputy because Grant's still a deputy.
Okay, can you stop? Okay. I have three points. One, I think it, there is areas that there were not supposed to be any signs. And in particular, everything north of 84th Avenue and west of 108th Street, there was supposed to be no signs. So I don't think it's a hard thing to give the people notice saying, your sign's in an illegal place. And if they don't move them, then go take them away. Because there were many, many signs. And once somebody put one sign there, then other people started putting signs. The other thing is, is that intersections, you're not supposed to have any signs in any intersection. And usually it was 60 meters, yet we had people putting signs on every street corner in the Downcount Court. And as soon as you see one, if I was bylaw, just go pull it. I mean, you shouldn't have to give somebody a warning if they can't even follow the simple rules. And the last thing, the map, the numbers were not sequenced properly. So you, you had numbers, one at the top of the map and 48 almost in the same area. If you're going to do the map, do them east to west or north to south, but just put them in sequential area. It just made it very hard to try and match the map to the map, to the number on the map. So that, to me, is a simple solution that could happen at GIS. So just my thoughts to pass on in the future.
Hundred percent, Counselor O'Connor. I think hyperlink might do that on one map and then open up all those other maps. I got Counselor Berg next.
Thank you, Chair Thiessen. I'm going to confess, I've had zero problems with mine, but I hate clutter. So I actually didn't use the 42 pages of maps. I would just go to the link, zoom in to where I was and see where I could put it. And I just had that link always ready. Didn't have any crash issues, no issues around that. And so to me, the simple solution already exists, it just doesn't sound like a lot of people are using it. So it worked for me for two elections and I have no problem again with, with the system within GIS. But yeah, it was frustrating knowing that there were rules and a handful of people, four or five, just absolutely 100% disregarding them and putting them on islands and intersections and different areas that they weren't allowed to be. And partly because of safety. So one, there's an aesthetic look, but also there is a safety element to it too. And so I appreciate Counselor Platt bringing that forward, that maybe somehow we educate these people that it's not just an aesthetic risk, but potentially a safety risk as well. Thanks.
Awesome, thanks for that feedback, Counselor Berg. I got Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Chair Thiessen. I would just want to echo Counselor Bressi's comments. I do think adding a criminal record check would be a discussion I'd like to have as well. Also would love to see the city be a little more proactive, as Counselor Bressi mentioned, on posting the sign bylaws and letting social media warriors take over like they do. But, you know, I think a lot of people would have been quite surprised realizing some folks that were just lately not following the rules. And I think it might have sorted itself out had there had been a mechanism there. My questions around candidates and information though this time. We currently have a $100 fee and $25 signature. I just want to clarify, that's the same for mayor and council. And does everybody get their $100 back when the election's closed out?
Ms. Pennick.
Through the chair, there are some, some rules and regulations in the Local Authorities' Elections Act that actually says who gets their deposit back.
Okay, so can, I guess, question one, so 25 signatures and $100 was out the same for everybody that ran mayor or council?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay, and then what, just to give me an idea, what would preclude you from not getting your deposit back? Like, I'm sorry, I never read that. I just, most people I've talked to have got their money back. So was there something you had to do wrong or something that you wouldn't have got your $100 back? Or just not enough votes?
Through the chair, I believe it's within, don't quote me, 5% of the lowest person who was elected. So I'd have to go back and actually pull the specific reference in the LAEA, but it wouldn't be everybody. Candidates who were farther down in terms of overall votes, they wouldn't be getting their deposit back. There's only a few that are specifically identified within those margins in the LAEA.
Okay. And is there a mechanism that we can, I guess, and this is maybe just a will of council, the C-1480, another bylaw, potentially coming back. For me, I would like to see us raise the dollar amount and the threat, the amount of signatures required to run for mayor. 25 signatures seems like a lot, but I feel like if you're going to run for mayor, if you can't get 100 signatures, I don't know if that's a good use of you running for your own election. And I say that not tongue in cheek, but I think some folks, if they couldn't have drummed up 100 names to sign, they might have saved themselves a lot of time and actually money of trying to run a campaign if they couldn't get the 100 signatures. So there's nothing that would preclude us from moving that up to 100 or change the dollar amount for mayor. That would be a council decision.
Ms. Pennick.
Through the chair, we could certainly bring back any limitations that the LAEA does have. But there are certainly some provisions that council can, can make in your own elections bylaw.
Okay, so I guess just to signal to admin, if this were to come back, that'd be something I would like to have a discussion about is raising that threshold of signatures. I know we did that last term. We had still a ton of candidates come out even though we raised the threshold. I don't think that raising that threshold is a bad thing personally, so I'd love to have a debater conversation about the threshold for mayor and the dollar amount for mayor as well.
Yeah, thank you for that, Counselor Platt. I don't disagree. I think, I think one of, this is my feedback to all the, to all the, I guess, runners up to the mayor chair, but I really felt like a lot of people who came to the mayors, they liked to run for the mayor's spot, they really came into it. Any of them were probably banking on the fact that maybe people were mad at council and the figurehead Jackie, you know, that they would have a better chance of getting elected because people vote for anybody but. So it's easy to get that 25 signatures and $100 is a very small commitment. To answer one of your questions and not to correct Ms. Pennick, because I don't know 100% either, but I know in the past, the, it was set that the deposit would be returned to all councilors who received at least 50% of the last elected councilor's total votes. So in this case, mine was 2887, I believe. So that would be about 1,440 plus votes that somebody would have to get in order to get their deposit returned. And I don't know if we can change that or shift that, but that's how they used to be. And I'm not sure if they're still that way. But I agree, like when this comes back, I think we should raise the signature threshold at least. Not sure about the deposit, maybe for mayor, but I think even for council, like, you know, maybe 100 for the mayor and 50 for council. That shows that you're committed to talking to as many people as possible in the community and ensuring that when you come and you're running for this, that you've got a lot of ideas and a lot of options of perspectives to pick through as you start to develop your own positions as a counselor. So I think more communication and more engagement is great. Moving over to Counselor O'Toole.
I feel the same. I think if you're going to run for the mayor, you're probably going to get some businesses or some support financially. And if you can't, then you shouldn't be running. My one concern that I really, really had this year was there would be hundreds of little tiny signs about this big that you could not read off of unless you were walking. And I would like to see a minimum signage size, just because people that had those small ones put like 25 or 30 in a spot where one would be adequate if you could read it. So I'm not going to debate it today, but I'm just thinking that we should look at that and say what a minimum sign posted would look like.
Okay, I have Counselor O'Connor. Thank you, Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, as nobody, it seemed like some areas, they didn't follow the three meter rule between signs. They started going beside them and around them. And there were a couple of areas that looked like a porcupine city of signs. And I just wouldn't put my signs there because how do you get noticed? So like what Counselor Berg said, I picked areas that I figured my signs would stand out and, and they did. So I think some people weren't following the rules, Kevin, and just the way it is.
Yeah, thanks for that, Counselor O'Connor. What I do remember about your signs is they were, the first ones out all over the street. And I think people went to where your signs were and they sort of picked their spots around your signs. They're very magnetic in that, even in their design. So I have Counselor O'Toole back in the queue.
Yeah, I, I don't have any real serious complaints. I do have, of all the years of running, I had two signs that were destroyed. And that kind of took a little wind out of my sail, but I also fixed other people's signs too. While you're out there fixing, you must have fixed the other guys. Because it was random. But in the end, what really bugged me of all is the signs that the wires were gone and nobody checked them. And, you know, people are walking, dogs are there. And I think that we just got to emphasize the fact that you look after your property if it's sitting on public property.
Agreed, agreed, Counselor O'Toole, thank you. Any other discussion on this topic? I think we've given administration lots of feedback and lots of points to go on and sounds like a future report for us to discuss and debate over. So thanks for engaging in this, guys, and thanks for all the hard work that went into this, Kim, from your team and from our team, or to your team from our team. Moving right along to our next item, we have a really cool item, I know that we've been working on for quite a while and now we've got it all here. It is Discover Grand Prairie and how we reach out and teach kids all about municipal government. And I think I'll turn this over to Ms. Bailey to introduce Ms. Swift and what we got ahead.
Thank you so much. So just as a refresher before my colleague jumps in here, Discover GP is one of our most high impact civic literacy programs, which gives students a hands-on understanding of how local government works and building early trust in city leadership and services. It not only strengthens the connection between youth and municipal decision-making, but also positions the city as an accessible, accountable institution invested in developing future community leaders. So with that, I'll gladly turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Swift, who's going to give a fabulous update today on this.
Thank you very much, Chief Bailey, and thanks for being here today, Ms. Swift, and all the hard work you put into it. I'm really excited to see how it translates here today. So take it away.
Yes, thank you so much. I am very excited to be here to discuss Discover GP, Local Government and Its Functions. Next slide, please. So really, like what is Discover Grand Prairie? Discover Grand Prairie is our field trip program, designed for kids, designed to engage, empower and equip our students. So for those of you that aren't quite familiar with our school program, this is something that we've already been doing and council has done it wonderfully. The intention of this program is to really help kind of streamline it and maximize that hour and a half that we get with the students. And so this program is really designed for grades five to eight. That seems to be the most popular... most popular demographic we have, but perfectly customizable for any other classes or programs that would like to come and utilize it. One of the things I'm most excited about is how customizable it is. So in your package, you'll see three different modules. The first one being local governments and its functions. So that's really the overall, what are you guys doing on a day-to-day? What does it look like? And a lot of the topics you see kind of laid out in there were provided by teacher feedback. And then other ones that I put in there, like budget, also provides you an opportunity to increase a learning experience, like financial literacy, to a grade five, $1,000 is so much money. But then all of a sudden, you're sitting at this and you're like, oh no. So it really provides a way to contextualize what you're doing through budget and through these different topics and what that translates to in a day-to-day basis. And then you have the second one, which is bylaws. What, why, how, why do we have them? And that also leads to another really fun portion of this program, which is exploring not just you guys, but the different people that help make the city run. So working closely with enforcement services, they're very excited. So if you wanted to have a bylaw officer or a member of our enforcement services come by and chat for 10 minutes, talk with the kids, explain what they do, open up for a question and answer, that's also a function that we're now able to provide through this program, which I think will just really kind of help elevate the experience as well. And then the third module, all of these to a degree are really flexing that active citizenship and what is our role as a citizen. One of the questions I know Councillor O'Connor loves to ask is who's the boss? So module three here really allows you to exercise that active citizenship and how do you get engaged through all the different ways that you can participate as a citizen. And we'll kind of get to that little fun activity at the end there. But that's kind of a very high level, what we're looking to do. And so, again, why? We want to equip, we want to empower these kids to not just be like, like, oh yeah, municipal government, they work on our roads, but just so much more and really make it personal and really kind of show just again that day-to-day, and get a firsthand account from you guys. Like, how cool is that to come here? Mayor pops in, you have two city councillors. Like, what an opportunity to have that just right here. And another fun thing is that it's out of the classroom, but it's learning from the moment you start to the moment you end. So again, back to working with the other, other city service providers, is having a discussion with our transit director and all of a sudden stumbling on his passion project, which is the Transit Ambassador Program. So that's an option is if the class wants to take a city bus to City Hall. They also have the option to have an add-on called the Transit Ambassador Program, which allows them to learn firsthand from transit. How do you read a bus map? How do you read the schedules? Where do the buses go? Public transit safety and all these different cool aspects, which also speaks to a need identified by our teachers. We have so many newcomers coming to Grand Prairie, and it's great. And they use our public transit, but they use exactly what they need to know. How do I get from my house to exactly where I need to be? And how do I get back home? So now what we're doing is through their children is providing an opportunity to educate them on the public transit system and how they can now kind of go all throughout the city. So that's really a high level scope of the project, and I'm now happy to take any questions.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for that, Ms. Swift. I have one question quick off the hop. So the Transit Ambassador Program, so who would be the ambassador on that? Would it be the transit driver or?
That's correct.
Okay, so they would just go on the intercom and then just talk about the different functions of transit and how kids can get on and where they get their free passes and all that stuff?
Absolutely. So it'd be kind of weather dependent with that one. So obviously, if it's cold, you're going to want to get them right on that bus. If it's nice outside, you can kind of stand outside, you can kind of chat, take questions. But it will be done specifically through transit. They are the ambassador for that program.
Okay, great. Well, I really love all of this. And, you know, Councillor O'Connor and I, we did this pretty much all last term, like for four years. And I saw you sneaking your head in and out. And I saw a lot of the stuff that we try to teach, like really reflected and more. So I really thank you for, for that and for taking what we were trying to cobble together and putting into cohesive modules that every councillor can use and sort of go to bat without feeling intimidated by it. So I'll turn it over for questions. I got Councillor Bressi in the queue first. So Councillor Bressi, take it away.
Great, thank you. Well, first, I just want to say a big thank you to Ms. Swift and anybody else who was involved in this. This is, these great civic classes are the absolute best part of this job. And them coming prepared is going to make it even better for us and them. And also, teachers getting kids on field trips, transportation's a big issue if they're far away, they, there isn't the budget for school buses. So I love to work with transit. So a huge thank you to everybody working on this. It's a priority for me, and I'm happy to see it. Also, I know that all of us who were around the council table last term did some of these, but Councillor Teason and O'Connor went above and beyond and did a ton of these. So I also want to thank those two colleagues for really prioritizing these young residents and making this program what it is. So thank you to you two especially. A few really quick comments on this, and then a couple ideas of where it could potentially go next, is first of all, I feel like an hour and a half is a really long time to have some classes in chambers, not all, but some classes. And an hour is a really long time to be at council meeting for. I always think with kids, sometimes less is more, and you want to leave on the high point, not the low point. And so just make sure we're communicating with bus drivers, teachers, that I think it'd be better to say, hey, this will last 60 to 90 minutes, depending on your class. And if there's some flexibility there, that'd be great, so that you can end it if the class is starting to get antsy. But you can also give them the full time if they're, if they're hyper-engaged, is one idea. Also, just on that path to, on that path to getting involved, I suggest we also include Youth Advisory Council on that. I'd love to pump that at those things. But a few really minor tweaks about what I'm seeing right now, because I think this is fantastic, it's going to be really great. But talking about the future of this program, I think it's wise to just say this is the program for now. But if it goes well, two ideas that I would love to see us explore in the future is see if we can work with the library, the art gallery, and GPPS, who are all downtown, and are there kind of add-on modules we can make with them? So a class could spend an entire day downtown engaging in civic activities and getting to know things. And so that could be a fun evolution in the future. And also an idea for council, I think something that could be fun in the future is if every year we identified a couple community enhancement projects that are low values, they're in the thousands of dollars, not the tens of thousands of dollars, but a few community enhancement programs that we could pre-authorize at the beginning of the year and actually have these classes debate the pros and cons of them. And then at the end of the year, we do the enhancement project that was picked by the majority of classes. Could be a really fun way to enhance this program by letting these kids actually debate how real dollars get spent making real impact in the community. So just an idea for my colleagues that I hope to chat with you more as we go through this year.
Thanks for your input there, Dylan. Yeah, I really appreciate that last idea. I'd like to see how it plays out and comes forward to us. Councillor O'Connor and I are always telling the kids that they're the boss and that they can make a difference simply by coming in here and requesting stuff. So again, we did that today with Councillor Flack and O'Shea in attendance. And yeah, that could really show them, hey, you know what, we had a say in creating this new bike park or skate park or something along those lines. And I do agree with you. Usually, the council meeting, mock council meeting usually runs about 30 to 45 minutes safely, even with the most engaged classes. So we can extend that or shrink that. But I also like the downtime, because usually we finish the council meeting, we look at the time and go, oh, time for a picture and get out of here, you know. And I think that that refresher time that is in the package of what you said, okay, well, let's ask questions about the experience, that could help develop future leaders and enhance the experience for the kids and the teacher. I have Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Teason. Thank you, Katie. This is, you've done an excellent job on this. And one of the things that I think could be in here is the, you don't mention the MGA. Where do we get our rules from? And the MGA should be in here. I always bring, I always bring an MGA book with me and say, here, this is what we are supposed to do based on this book. So I'm wondering if that couldn't be incorporated into this slide. We usually try and cover everything that you've got on the three modules. Just depends on what the teacher wants to accomplish. And I really appreciated that you've allowed the teachers to say, here's what we need to learn. So I thought the whole layout is excellent. And so anyway, the only thing is MGA.
Yeah, Ms. Swift?
Yeah, absolutely. Through the chair. One of the beautiful parts about your council guide is that while it's meant as a really strong framework, it also doesn't remove the authenticity and the organicness that you all bring to the school programs. So completely customizable, I would appreciate if you'd adhere to it to some degree. But throwing in new things, adding in extra things, I can definitely add in the MGA, but also knowing that you guys are the city councillors, there's so much to discuss. And so definitely not trying to restrict any of your freedoms either in that regard with this program. So MGA can add in there, or maybe something has just come up in council and you have a class that following Wednesday. That's a really great opportunity to just kind of like plug that right in and seize that opportunity. So just for that. And I would also say to the length of it, an hour and a half from the scheduling side is typically what we just provide teachers with just for their own awareness. The other nice part in talking with teachers for some of the more, some of the older grades, is that also allows them to go through a couple different topics and for different people to get to exercise their roles. So it's very customizable in time. If it's like 30 minutes and we're done, we're done. If they're really engaged and that teacher's really prepped their class, then it would be cool to kind of see them exercise that. Thank you.
Yeah, and follow-up?
Definitely.
Okay. The other thing that we noticed is that if the teachers are prepared and prepare their class, we've had the mayor already picked, we've had some councillors already picked, and some discussion topics. But what we find the hardest, off the top of their head, they don't have a topic. And so any preparation we can give the teacher to be able to have that discussion before they come makes it a lot easier for us. And then we're not trying to play this game of what should we talk about? The other thing we do is we also teach them how to do an election. And we've done the electing of the mayor and some councillors, and we get them to speak in front of their compatriots. It's, it's quite fun actually to do it that way. But we also noticed that when kids come from other countries, I think it's the GLIP?
Yeah, the Local Immigration Partnership, yep.
When they show up, we didn't realize, one time Chris and I were doing it, and we didn't realize that they didn't understand a word we were saying, because not all of them had English as a first language. So we had to change the format and make it more fun, because they just weren't getting it. So it depends on which group of kids are coming to us.
And we certainly do modify the program, depending on if we got summer camp kids or immigration kids. And this was just a comedy of errors. We had, half the class was Nigerian, and they all spoke really, really great English. And then there was a bunch of Ukrainian kids, and only half of those kids spoke English. So maybe that was just what we saw, and we, so we thought, okay, this is great. But what we didn't realize until too late in the process was that, well, some of the kids that we're asking questions to weren't shy. They just had no idea what we were saying. So thanks for that feedback, Mr. Platt, or sorry, I got Mr. Platt in the queue, Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Swift, would you like to comment back on Councillor O'Connor or just keep moving along the queue?
Through the chair. We can keep moving on, but that is a good point to keep in mind as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Platt?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Teason. I just, I just want to echo a couple of Councillor Bressi's comments. I do think if we could somehow get, whether if they're taking the transit here, I've always thought it'd be cool if we could loop in the library in Eric Govey at some point. From doing a few of these, I do think an hour around here is probably too long. You, if you get a class at 25, there's 12 to 15 kids sitting there and 10 or 12 participating. So I'd hate to set out that parameter saying that, hey, we're going to do more as a council. I think we have a really cool opportunity to debate and engage the kids as they're standing there. And I've watched it with these, with my colleagues quite a bit. And you could probably do an hour and a half without even getting around the horseshoe. There's, there's that much kind of conversation that can happen. One thing I was hoping, I guess for council, is I appreciate we have limit, but I do worry sometimes we're not singing the right song sheet. So I don't, I wonder sometimes if council, and you know, last term we discussed giving us some ABCs to talk with. You know, we quote different numbers, we quote different things. And I mean, I'm not sure if that's the best matches sometimes to send it home if we're not saying the same things apples to apples from one set of council members telling a story versus another set. And I'm wondering if there's a one pager we could be sending home with kids. I think it'd be really cool to actually send them home with something. Maybe you graduated the certificate from Grand Prairie, and on the back, it's a bunch of fast facts about our community that the parents could see. I do think the role is to educate, not just the kids. I think the kids go home pretty excited, and I think lots of times we gain some great advocates with our parents. So if we could send something home, that would be great. And just if we're going to build on that, a dream that I would think would be cool is, you know, as council, when we did orientation, we toured a bunch of facilities. I think there's an awful lot of kids would rather tour the city super center than the city hall. And so just thinking as we're a massive employer, we're thinking about these kids and these, what their futures and opportunities are going to bring. There's an awful lot of kids that would think it'd be really cool to work at City Hall. There's a lot of kids that would think it'd be really cool to work in one of those departments of the city service center. So we'd love to see that somebody be incorporated in there as well.
Yeah, that's some great feedback, Councillor Platt. Thanks for adding that. I see Ms. Swift writing away. I got Ms. Flack, Councillor Flack in the queue.
Yeah, thank you. I have two questions, actually, surprisingly. And we did one with Councillor O'Connor and Councillor Teason this morning, and Councillor O'Shea, and it was awesome. My friend actually texted me after and said that their class mayor said it was his most favorite field trip ever. So you guys crushed it. My first question was, how are you going to be communicating this program to the teachers?
Absolutely. So in our previous stakeholder sessions that I've had with the teachers, their city internet, or where the city, their school internet, so kind of sending it through, so sending it to the different districts. So we have the public school, the Christian school, the Catholic school, the French school. They'll then send it out to all of their teachers, letting them know this program is launched, the link to find it. So we'll have a whole city webpage that houses all this information you have in front of you today, minus your council guide. And so all the teachers will be pinged. A lot of them are already asking for it, they're ready for it, and then it'll be sent out through their channels.
And then just one more question, and I think I know the answer to this, but just so everyone knows, is there any cost to this program at all?
Sure. So there's still some materials we're sourcing. So if you don't mind, I'm going to confirm that and follow up with you.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
One of the costs that I did see in the report though, was just as long as the adults pay for the transit service, if we have that transit service?
Yes, that's one of the things we're just ironing out. So we'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Swift. I got Councillor O'Toole.
Yeah, I, I think this is a great program. I know sometimes we had kids in here that it was well over their head, and they were playing with everything except listening to the instructors. So is there a minimum age?
Through the chair, no. The nice part is that a lot of our teachers are very advanced planners. So if we identify a class, let's say we have a grade three class coming in, and that is pinged to the EA, then that's a good note just for us to kind of look and just kind of help you guys help them, and just figure out a way that we can kind of really scale that down in time and subject matter and activity to help that class out.
I had another couple of questions. Could you, I like Wade's idea of having some fact sheets, but when you have the topics, can you have, or is it possible to incorporate answers that the city wants to give back? Like, answers to a question that we were, would really like to impose on the, on the students? So.
Like what, Councillor O'Toole?
I know I've ran into it a few times, and Mike would say something, you would say something, and I would say something, and they're conflicting answers. And I would just like that to be, because they're walking around going, hmm. But like the number of transit buses, the number of workers that we have on site, and do we, do we do paving all year round, or do we do pothole repairs? How many people work in parks? And how can I get a job? That kind of stuff. It's simple stuff, but it's consistent and it's, you know, your brother, or the kid's brother could come from a different school, and he hears totally different information. So if there's a fact sheet or a handout that has all this stuff that we don't have to question, it's just there, they can look at it, and that kind of stuff. I think the project, I'm behind it 110%. I don't want to pick it apart, but if we can get some of that information out there now and start off on an excellent start, I think this is just going to make things much better.
Awesome. Thanks for that, Councillor O'Toole. If we do go to a fact sheet, one thing that I, I thought, do you like the, the random facts about the city? We try to throw those out there all the time just to show people how large the organization is, because it seems to blow kids' minds when they find out that our budget is over $200 million, and they want to know what we spend it on. So we try to throw some things out there, like how many staff we have, including the summertime staff. But with the fact sheets, I think if we were going to go in that direction, I like the idea of if council's working on something that is relevant to the idea of if council's working on something that is relevant to the kids or to the community, such as the police transition or the opening of the multi-sports dome, stuff like that. Or if, let's say we're starting to engage the community about something else, let's say it's a performing arts theater or something like that. We could put like engagement dates, if we have those, on those fact sheets so those kids can bring those home to their parents. So if they want to get their parents more engaged in civic politics, then, and they could do that too. So just, just a thought if we're going to go the fact sheet route. I have councillor O'Connor in the queue. I'm sorry.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Just to follow up on that, I think councillor Platt brought up a great point of having a fact sheet. And we have to remember, not all people and the students that are in the more, their parents may not know anything about municipal government. So it'd be nice to have that sheet to send them home and say, this is what we're doing on the police transition. That seems to come up in every class that comes here. And I'm wondering, you know, we don't, we're not able to communicate to everyone, but I think it, we can do that through the kids and, and have them bring that information home. So the size of our budget, what do we spend money on? Really simple answers that could focus on what does the public need to know? And they don't realize we have seven hundred employees during the year and then almost eleven hundred when it comes as seasonal work. So I think that information, educating the public at home is a great tool and I think sending it home with the kids would be a wonderful idea. And then that's, that's my point.
Thanks for that councillor O'Connor. I got councillor Platt back in the queue.
Thanks. Just one other, I know we're talking about in council chambers. I know I've had a couple of times where teachers have reached out specifically and I went and sat in the classroom and done a similar thing. Are we going to be promoting that as well? And the reason I'm asking that is during certain like grade five and grade six and or grade six when they're learning about municipal, that was a great opportunity for teachers to take advantage of a council member to come in and just have that hour of class time. Lot less on the teacher, pretty easy, they book a link, one of us pops in, they're not trying to get transportation, all that stuff. Is that something else we're exploring right now?
Yes, so I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Through the chair. So I also have an on-the-road program, which also, which comes with a nice PowerPoint presentation that's in design right now. And so that actually kind of covers like those random facts that we're discussing for these fact sheets of like how many departments to take to get a bus on the road. A lot of stuff that we use actually for our own city orientation program actually translates really well to that random fast fact. And so looking to incorporate that into on the road. So you're here, we're blessed because we have a lot of visual aids, we have the phone camera where they can see themselves on the screen, where you don't have that when you go to a classroom. So the PowerPoint will kind of help give you that visual aid, help kind of get across like what does it take to make a city run and that kind of thing as well for you.
Okay, no, that would be great. I would, I was just going to say for context, the couple of times I went in classroom visits, the hour flew by and there was none of this. It was just such an engaged group of kids both times that I've done that and just, I think there's a real opportunity again for us to get in the, in the schools as well.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. That's a lot of fun. And where we see the time flies when the kids have lots of questions to ask and sometimes you cover all the material just by, just by the great questions that the kids are asking there. I don't see anybody else in the queue, but I would like to just make a couple more comments on things that I really liked about this package. One, the schedule is really great. It's going to be really easy for teachers to sort of look at that and book around these dates. It's easy on us and then it's not so willy-nilly. So that's laid out very clearly for everybody and I really appreciate that as well as setting up the teachers for success. So one, you're setting us up for success by having the modules, but then you also have, okay, teachers, let's hold you by the hand. Is it cold outside? Make sure everybody's dressed right and, and that you have enough volunteers and stuff. And so I really, I really appreciate that because I know that the teachers, it can sometimes be a harrowing experience bringing twenty kids out into the world and being responsible for them, especially if you only have one or two parent volunteers with you. But I think that extra care and consideration that went beyond what we're doing and went to the classroom to help empower the teacher to make the whole classroom and learning experience better for everybody. Like, okay, have your election, pick your councillors, like have some topics. All that stuff was discussed in the teacher's section at the end of this package and I really appreciate that. And I think the teachers who receive it will appreciate it too. So thank you so much. I guess my question is, where do we go from here? So there's no motion attached to this. Will this just show up at a committee meeting or council meeting and, or is this just it and we all love it?
Thanks to Teason. It was really just to introduce to this, to, to council and the public and it'll just become into use. If there's any evolving feedback as, as this is being utilized, please pass that on to, to Ms. Swift. But this was really just the, the launch of it and to introduce it to everyone.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for that, Mr. Burke. I have, we didn't ring in, oh, there he is, councillor O'Connor.
I assume that Katie, that this is a living, growing document and we'll adapt it as we see going along and, and we should kind of change it up every once in a while just to make sure that we're meeting that need. So I'm assuming that, yes.
Swift?
Yes, through the chair. So this is very much a living pilot program. And the intention of it is while it's a robust framework now, it's exactly what we're able to deliver right now instead of overpromising, under-delivering. So what we'll be doing is after, we're going to let it run for this whole semester because this is really when the bulk of those field trips start happening is in this kind of winter, spring into the kind of summer. Let it run. If there's immediate feedback, incorporate that right away, but then take that really as a summer project to source your feedback, source the teacher feedback. We'll be sending surveys out, just like two question surveys to the teachers after they attend, just kind of get that immediate while it's fresh, reevaluate in the summer and then as we, I anticipate this kind of expanding and growing. I think we've all kind of identified the potential for what this can bring to the city. So that'll be ongoing.
Okay, perfect. I, I really appreciate that and send it through the CAO to you if there's any recommendations. Yeah, okay, perfect.
Awesome, thanks for that clarification there, Mr. O'Connor. Yeah, I think we're going to have to be pretty fluid with this because when the summer rolls around or when we get to spring break, we get a lot of kids from the Champions Gym as well as the Grand Prairie Local Immigration Partnership. That's not typically tailored grade six students that are walking through here, but it'll be like a mixture of anyone from five all the way up to eighteen sometimes is how it goes. So yeah, this though is very robust enough that it gives everybody enough stuff that they can go with the flow when it comes in. Thank you very much for all the great work here Katie, for you and your team and we appreciate this very much and thank you. And looking at the rest of the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, I have nothing else except Mr. CAO in the queue.
Thank you Chair Teason. I'm going to request we add, we have item four point five added to the agenda here and it's, it's a verbal item, we'll request some direction on. This is an administrative request under policy six oh two, which covers leases over five years, requesting council approve an airport request for approval of a specific airside property tenant lease that includes length of term beyond the airport commission's head lease. So I would, 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 would request that as per policy six oh two, council direct administration to co-sign the Grand Prairie Airport sublease GPA zero five seven six with an extension to May thirty-first, twenty fifty-four.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Mr. Burke. I have two members in the queue, councillor O'Connor.
Unless there's somebody else, I would like, I'll make the motion.
Oh, okay. Councillor O'Toole was in the queue, I think he wanted to do the same thing, he was just quicker.
Okay. I'd like to, as per policy six oh two, committee direct administration to co-sign the Grand Prairie Airport sublease GPA zero five seven six with an extension to May thirty-first, twenty fifty-four.
Right, that motion is in order. I'll look around the table for any discussion or debates on the motion. Seeing none, I'll call it to question. And that motion carries seven to nothing. And with that, now that the CAO's microphone is off, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you everybody for being here today and participating with us. We'll see you at the next committee meetings.